I'd like to call the Freetown Board of Selectmen's meeting to order if I could please. We've got some interesting things on our agenda tonight. At five after five, we're going to award some -- hand some awards out to third graders for their great job they did on essays. And we're going to present them for a selectman for a day, so after we get through that, they're going to come and join us and vote on the money articles and stuff that we're going to vote on today. So you guys will have the pleasure of probably helping us spend a million bucks or so tonight. So that'll be good.
The little gentleman in green is like already pressed.
Future salesman and politician right there.
He told me he was going to run against me and take my seat.
He could.
Yeah, I told him. No problem.
Then we've got some actions to attend to. We have to approve a Hawker and Peddler's license for the annual fireworks celebration for William Franks and Michael Nicoli. Discuss an approval letter asking for use of Hathaway Park for a wedding ceremony on July 18th. Approve the use of Hathaway Park for a small wedding ceremony. Ambulance abatements for the month of May is submitted by the fire chief. Sign, approve, and reserve fund transfer submitted by Jacqueline Brown, the town clerk. Sign drug subsidies for retirees transfer to the OPEB trust as submitted by Jack Haley and sign a net metering credit purchase agreement with DePica Solar and discuss and sign an IMA agreement and inter municipal agreement between Freetown and Fall River. We're going to discuss that anyway. So without further ado, I'd like to call some excellent third graders up here for some awards for the essays they wrote about the town of Freetown. So Mr. Dylan Bradley, would you like to read your essay to us, please? Let me see if that mic's in. Let me see if that -- is this going to be your first time on television, Mike, Dylan?
You're on television. Could you take it?
There you go. Perfect. No, perfect.
Freetown is a great place to live in. I have lived here my whole life, and my mother lived here her whole life also. I got to Freetown Elementary School, and I am in third grade. All of the teachers that I had in the school were the best. Freetown is a great town to make friends. I have lots of friends in school and in baseball. Baseball is my favorite thing to do in Freetown. I play for the FYAA. My baseball team is in first place right now. My mom and dad take my sister, and I pour pizza at nephew's restaurant in Freetown. They have the best pizza ever. In the summer, I like to go to Freetown State Forest and play in the sprinklers. We always pack a picnic when we go. They are even pictures of my grandmother's house at the historical society. Her house is very old. There are lots of things that I like about my town. Those are just a few of them.
Go up there and have a seat with us. Grab one of these seats, please. Next is Makai Jahawa. No pressure.
I just moved to Freetown in first grade. I moved here from Hawke Island, which is my favorite city in Freetown. Freetown has a lot of farms and open areas with tons of nature. Our houses and homes, then estates, and every year, the whole neighborhood has a giant market sale that brings tons of people from different places. They block off the entire neighborhood, and there are trucks that sell snacks and drinks. We also have a neighborhood flesh lunch, Easter egg hunt each year. Our neighbors, the Jokes, put the event together for all of the neighborhoods' chicks. It takes place at night. We use flesh lunch to bar the hidden eggs filled with candy. I love that. I wish we found a hot ice cream room. I play ice hockey and travel the ways in the park to do it. It would be nice if I played closer to where I live. Each Fourth of July, we watch Fireworks at Hathaway Park. The town of Freetown, which is on the side of this one, is very great. I think that there's a nice DVD thing that comes on of the favorites, like to do in Freetown though, happens every Memorial Day weekend. But I love the late chat festival at Cathedral Camp with all the crazy rats. Since I moved to Freetown, I often climbed Popeye Rock. It was a lot of fun. I like to do active things, and Freetown has the space to do it, unlike where I used to live in the city. Popeye Rock is shaped like the face of the name of the name of American Massasoia. This is what the local name Indians used to say. Freetown's history is interesting to learn about because it is one of the oldest communities in the United States. The pilgrims settled here in the 1600s. I think our field trip on June 8th will be a lot of fun.
Very good.
I miss it before the field trip.
Camille and Barney. No pressure, Delanie.
This is why I'm proud of Freetown, Massachusetts. When I was four, my family moved from Wofford, Massachusetts to Freetown. I didn't know if I would like living here, but I do. Freetown offers so much for families. We have good schools with teachers who really care about their kids. Quiet country roads and even land turkey Indian walkin' through our yard. Have you ever eaten fresh fried eggs on a Sunday morning? Best you've ever tasted? During the summer, Freetown offers a strata race festival, a cute parade, and an awesome carnival and fireworks display on July 4th. There's the Lakeside Festival on Memorial Day weekend, too. We have friendly police and fire departments that even let kids visit. Our town libraries and power hall are interactive, and we have many historical homes, too. Freetown State Forest is a great place to go hiking, enjoy nature, or even on hot days, take a walk through its cool water park. You can even have a picnic. Or you can go down the road a little while and visit Popeye Rock. You can see the Popeye of the great Indian chief Massasoia. You can also visit the Historical Museum on Bullet Row. If you want to swim, visit the Town Beach on beautiful Mont Palm. Freetown also has really nice shops and restaurants, like the Ascent Inn or the Nephews Restaurant. If you like sports, you can catch a baseball game at Little Family or soccer game at the nearby Ted Williams Camp. Towards natural beauty, quiet town life, and majestic forests, Freetown has many things to be proud of.
Very good. Mr. Charles Trantor, please.
I'm part of my community. Like Charles Trantor, when I moved here from Boston, I was afraid I would not like Freetown as much as Boston, but the community proved me wrong. I'm happy to say I am proud of Freetown for its history with freedom, Indian and foreign landmarks. I'm also proud of my community and the nice people that make me feel like I am part of the town. Our town has wonderful schools to make us smarter. We have our own police and fire departments to keep us safe. We also have a board of selectmen that take care of our beautiful town. So let's hear for the selectmen. Yes, the Freetown that I like is the many beautiful trees, I can climb, and all the lakes I can swim in.
I was very proud to award these great students these well-deserved recognition for their essays. The certificate will read, "Congratulations on your well-deserved recognition by the Freetown Elementary School for your outstanding 'Why I'm Proud of Our Community' essay. We are grateful for the time, effort, and thought you put into the work. This level of effort is reflective of your excellent character and your understanding of what it means to live in Freetown. Clearly, you acknowledge that our town is a wonderful community, and you've put value into it by your writing. At this time and in the coming years, we are confident that you will demonstrate through your deeds the same love of town and your appreciation for those who serve it. So please accept our most sincere congratulations on this award. You make Freetown very proud." So you'll get these after they're signed. Now, as the meeting moves forward, and we make motions for -- try to proceed on town business, in each motion, the selectmen have to vote on it. So when the selectmen have done voting on it, I'm going to mention each one of your names, and you can either vote yes or no, depending how you feel. Okay? And it'll go on record that you were involved in the vote. So moving on to our consent agenda, does anybody care to approach the board for anything to say? Is anyone recording this meeting other than Mr. Sadik and --
I actually --
Okay. First, our agenda. We're going to take action to approve a Hawker and Peddler's license for the annual fireworks celebration for William Frank and Nicole -- and Michael Nicoli.
Do you, boys and girls, know what a Hawker and Peddler's license is? Okay, we -- you guys all go to the fireworks, right? So do you know the cart that sells all the balloons and the, well, the candy and the balloons? You haven't seen one of those little carts?
No, I've never went there.
You haven't been there yet?
Yeah, it's my first year here.
Oh, you'll definitely, you'll definitely go. We have another surprise for you, too. So you all, you've seen them though at other parades, right? Those are called Hawkers and Peddlers, and there's a special license that we have to give out because they can't just show up all at once because it wouldn't be fair to everybody. So do you think we should give them permission to sell some balloons and candy and novelties and all that fun stuff?
Yes.
Yeah, probably. I'll make a motion to approve the Hawker and Peddler's license for Frank, let's see, William Frank, and then another one for Michael Nicoli.
See, what happens is somebody has to make a motion, and then somebody else has to second it. So I'm going to second Mrs. Pacheco's motion.
And as the chairman of the board, I have to say that we have a motion made and seconded as read to approve Hawker and Peddler's license. And then we say all in favor?
So, go ahead.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Dylan, Patel, Camille, Charlie. Motion passes. Next, we have to discuss and approve a letter asking for the use of Hathaway Park for a wedding ceremony on July 18th, 2015.
So this is pretty simple, right? Somebody wants to get married, and they want to go to Hathaway Park, and they want to have their ceremony there. It's a beautiful park. I think some of you might have talked about that in your letters about the town. So I'll make a motion to approve, and also with the notation that there is no police necessary after Carlton reviewed it.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve a letter asking for use of Hathaway Park for a wedding ceremony. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Cab.
Aye.
Camille.
Aye.
Charlie.
Aye.
Motion made, passed. Send to books. Third, to approve use of Hathaway Park for a small wedding ceremony.
No, that's what we just did.
Same one. Are you two licenses for that? Okay. Next, we have the ambulance abatements for the month of May is submitted by the chief. I'll make a motion to approve the abatements of $47,995.93.
I'll second that. So in town, we have an ambulance service, so when people get sick, the ambulance goes and picks them up and brings them to the hospital. But not all the time can those people afford to pay their insurance. So what we do is we forgive them for that. We abate those things. So we think it's a good thing because some people can't afford to do that.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded to approve ambulance abatements to the tune of $47,993, give or take, if you sense. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dylan.
Aye.
Kai.
Aye.
Camille.
Aye.
Charles.
That's okay. You can think about it.
Well, there's some dozens of money for it.
It does. You only think about that long and hard when it's an election year. Put it this way, even if you vote, know it's still going to pass because of the -- so the motion passes. Okay. Sign and approve reserve fund transfer request is submitted by Jacqueline Brown. We have two, actually. One for $750 and one for $200, but Ally said we needed to add one for another $200 to this, so we have transfer reserve fund for $750, one, two for $200.
Two for $200? What are those for?
Election Department expenses for $750.
Right.
Was it two for $200 or one?
One for $200.
Still from elections?
No, it's interdepartmental.
Okay, so.
One for $750 and one for $200.
All right, we'll take them separately. I'll make a motion to approve the request submitted by Jackie Brown, town clerk, and the amount is $750. Vote to -- I'll make a motion to move it to the finance committee.
I'll second.
Certain motion made and seconded to approve a request for fund transfers of $750 to be moved to the finance committee for their approval. So this is for election expenses. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sadik.
Aye.
Mr. Dylan.
Aye.
Miss, Miss, Miss?
Miss, it's our wife.
Kai.
Aye.
Miss Camille.
Aye.
And Mr. Charles.
Aye.
It's only $750, too. That's not a big thing anymore.
Oh, how many do I?
So we have another one in the amount of $200.
I think we have to have some discussion on that one.
The $200 advertising?
Advertising?
It's interdepartmental.
It's an interdepartmental transfer from advertising.
Transfer from BOS advertisement to salary.
That's why we should have that discussion because I understand it's for --
Administrative assistance?
Yes. I just wanted to make a motion that we maybe want to up it a little bit.
Up it a little bit? Depends how peaceful you want the next year. So that's, we have a --
I'll make a motion.
Motion made and seconded to transfer $200. We have a motion made and seconded for the transfer of $200 from the Board of Selectmen's advertising fund to salary and wages. So you're going to give someone $200. Charles is going to have a problem with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Dylan.
Give someone $200.
Makai.
Aye.
Camille.
Aye.
Charles.
Charles, Charles, it's this nice lady here. I mean, she needs $200 so she can pay her bills.
She works for it. Or she's Democrat.
He's truly going to be a ball.
We need a yea or a hater, big guy. One way or the other.
Tough decision, I know.
What is opposite of I?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, yea.
Nay, okay. Motion's passed, finally.
Really, Charlie?
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we appoint these four to be our junior marshals in the Fourth of July parade and walk alongside, walk alongside the selectmen.
No, I've already got a ride in the parade. I'm riding in an army truck, a real life army truck.
Can we change that?
Because you need it.
Can we change that to the Young and Barrow Selectmen?
Let's say, example.
The old timers can drive.
Yes, you guys know I'm a boy.
We definitely know that.
I made that mistake. These guys don't make mistakes like me.
No, no, we are, we are.
So that means you get to walk in a parade with the selectmen. Is that pretty good? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made, seconded?
Yes, seconded.
Have a motion made and seconded.
As read.
To approve, as read. You fellas walking in the parade. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dylan.
You want to walk in the parade?
Yeah, sure.
Kai.
I guess.
Camille.
Aye.
Charles. No pressure, Charles. It's just a walk.
No money.
I'm thinking about Alaska, and I'm thinking about the parade.
He has to go to Alaska this summer.
Okay, it's what I -- my mom says so.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, 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 aye. Let me hand out your certificates. Camille. And the consummate politician, Charles.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. A vote.
Why? Am I a politician? What is a politician?
A politician.
Making decisions? I think you may be. Hmm, or have I?
I think you have. You guys can join your families now. Thank you to the moms and dads and to the teachers for bringing us four intelligent, witty individuals. We really appreciate it, and this is actually one of the best nights that there is to be a selectman and to listen to the youth, and a wonderful job to the teachers, if I didn't say it as well. You've done a marvelous job once again. Thank you so much.
Next is assign drug subsidies for retirement transfer to other post-employment benefits trust as submitted by Jack Haley to the amount of $29,657.76.
Kim, do you want to speak to it?
Sure. During the month of August this year, the town received this money as reimbursement for retired drug subsidies, and according to MGL Chapter 32b, Section 20, you can take a position to transfer that funding into your OPEB trust fund. I would suggest that it's a good thing to do. It certainly would increase the OPEB trust fund. This was not anticipated revenue and budgeted for the fiscal year, so it's not going to hurt you in any way to move that out of the general fund and into the trust fund.
Do you make a motion to adopt the recommendation to transfer $29,657.76 to the OPEB fund?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to transfer $29,657.76 to the OPEB fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Done. Next is to sign a net metering credit purchase agreement with DePica Solar.
Yes, I'm going to hand down to you folks. Wait a minute. There you go. Sorry.
That's okay.
And also to go along with it, from Richard Holland, these explanations, instructions with respect to what he thinks we ought to do with this. Attorney Holland and I have been working diligently since before the suggestion for the amendment came to the board to negotiate this with DePica or Borrego. Jared Clennell, who you've met and who we've discussed this with before, is caught in what I call the Southeast Distress Way. You know where that is? The Southeast Distress Way is otherwise known as the Southeast Expressway. He's in a massive traffic tie-up, and will probably wander in here soon enough to react on this. But the town's attorney has also noted that the prior agreement, there were two places the board was to sign it, and the second signature didn't get done. So he's recommending that the board sign both documents. You have in your hand both the original agreement, which you entered into last March, I believe, and the amendment. The amendment would delay the start of our receipt of the net metering credits by about six months. They calculated that that was a little over $880 worth of interest on the money that we would have saved in that six-month period compared to what we're paying now for power. This is a purchase power agreement, and it's going to take care of all of our communities' power needs and town buildings, including the one we're in, which will reduce the school budget somewhat as well. The rate that we're paying now is upwards of 24 cents, I guess, usually. The rate, initial rate under this agreement has been reduced from the original agreement of 11 and a half cents to 11 cents. And we, so we negotiated a half a cent reduction in the initial rate. That translates into $3,097 a year, or over the 25-year term of the agreement, over $62,000 in savings. We also negotiated a kiosk that would be located somewhere in this building, which would show the facility in operation, as well as record the town's energy use and savings as a result of this agreement. That'd be an educational tool that the school department could use to further the youngster's knowledge of energy saving. So the amendment is before you also on the pages that we have. There are, this is the original agreement that was signed. the original agreement that was signed previously. And so, the question before you is whether or not to vote to approve the amendment and to re-sign the original agreement that you signed, I believe it was in March.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why the amendment?
The amendment is being, was being requested in the first place because of their, Borrego's desire to modify their portfolio. There are four different categories of solar projects, and they have many solar projects, as you can imagine, around the country and around the state. And I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of those four different categories, but they move their, they want to move their projects around so that they can maximize their revenue. And so we took advantage of the fact that they're looking to make some money by delaying on our project, and got a significant reduction in our rate, which will save us a great deal of money over time. And also, because there is an escalator on two percent every year, it'll decrease the escalating factor.
The escalation of two percent hasn't changed according to this.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not gonna have an impact on-
Well, the-
Only the fact that they reduce rate by one and a half a cent-
That's correct.
For the starting point.
Yes, that's right.
I guess, what impact does the delay have with us?
Well, that, that is what I discussed earlier, and that is that we're not, we're gonna get a six-month delay in the savings that we received. And I factored that out, I did the math, and it came out to about eight, $880.
That's what this is gonna cost us?
That, that's, no, that's what, no, that's what the interest value is on that loss of revenue. Send you an early email on that if I should probably-
Oh, we should?
Yeah. If you got that calculation.
So, I guess what, my, my understanding is, if we delay this, because they want us to delay it, we're gonna have a period of time where we're gonna pay the regular rate to the electric company that we're using.
Yes, and that was our fact, that was our invoice, is what the value of that delay was.
So that's why we went down to 11 cents? Because that's gonna be what we're gonna be-
No, I negotiated, in exchange for that delay, I negotiated that.
Right, that's exactly what I just said.
Right. And Town Coach is here. He's talked to Attorney Holland, who assisted me on this, and Mark can address any questions right now from the perspective.
The only question I have is, I, they're moving stuff around for their own person, for their own benefit.
Right.
And I would think that there would have been some type of better concession by then. And I, and I talked to him before-
Yeah.
About lowering that two percent interest.
I did. I approached him on that. And they declined to pick up on that. I asked the, I don't know if I have it clear, I asked them to reduce the mock-up annually from two percent to one percent. Which is what you requested.
Well, somewhere in the middle.
Right.
And he said?
They said, no, we can't do that.
I think what it is, they, they did come up with an amount that is, over time, going to more than compensate the town for the lost present value of the projects. The project shifts, but the, that reduction to the 11% more than offsets the present loss.
Certainly, because over 20 years, it's about $68,000.
Right, right. But it's, but yeah, there's, I mean, there's a present delay cost. But I think from their perspective, they, they're reluctant to negotiate on certain items based upon the fact that down the line, that'll be facing them in some other community. So they dole out these changes in a very limited manner. And this one, ultimately, it's a business decision for the, for the board, but ultimately, this does calculate and more than compensate for present loss, but it will occur further out and over a period of time. And you get the kiosk.
One of my recent town reports, town manager's reports, town administrator's reports, I gave you the whole email thread where that calculation was done.
Ms. Pacheco, are you comfortable with this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to delay anyone's, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Reluctantly, yes.
I know, right?
Have a motion made and seconded to approve our net meeting credit purchase agreement with DePico Sol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a reluctant.
No, I said-
I know.
Motion passes.
No, but it was, right?
So...
We gotta sign all of these, right?
Yeah, we do. I've got, I've got some over here. We get through the consent agenda. Next on our agenda is to discuss slash sign the IMA agreement between Free Town, uh, Free Town and Fall River.
This is one sign. We gotta sign, all of us have to sign.
Let's sign all of this first.
And this is the original, have you got the sign?
No, there's, they're, they're, they're all marked.
No, this isn't the same as that.
This is the, that's the agreement.
This is a new one?
Yeah. Well, this is the whole agreement.
We all agree, then we all have to sign.
This is right.
We only signed, we only got to sign one. I got to sign this one. Allergies, that's one. You wanna move by the district?
Right.
You're not gonna catch any of this, are you? Maybe I caught it from you.
I have allergies, so. Allergies are so awful. Allergies and gypsy moth caterpillars, they're disgusting.
Chicklars and gypsy moth caterpillars.
They're gross.
They're gross, you're not allergic.
No, 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 no. But I'm like, between allergies and gypsy moth caterpillars, it's disgusting.
Somebody told me that those gypsy moth caterpillars aren't native to here, and they came out of a lab or something in Worcester when they were studying them, and someone actually left the window open and the moths got out of it, and that's where it originated, in Worcester, and bounced all over the country.
It's ridiculous. There's another three weeks with those things.
Alright. Moving forward, discuss slash sign the IMA agreement between Free Town and Fall River. What are your feelings on this?
We're right back to where, really, where we started from. And what the only, the only thing that is new is just the boundary policy.
If I may?
Yep. Oh, go through the chair.
Through the chair, of course. My apologies. This, this matter obviously dates back quite a ways, and we know that we had a previous intermunicipal agreement that was approved, I think it was back in December, if I recall correctly, by, by this board. And since that time, obviously, there have been changes in the City of Fall River. And as a result of those changes, the new mayor had the agreement reviewed by his law department, and they brought in their outside counsel to review it as well. And unfortunately, as lawyers are wont to do, outside counsel gave it a very thorough review and made significant revisions to the agreement. Those revisions, those revisions were based upon, you know, particular understandings of what was, what was to be done in that agreement. I've spoken to folks at the Fall River redevelopment authority and the Fall River Community Development Office, and I've had extensive discussions with council for the, for the city. And I think there was some changes in understanding, and luckily, as a result of the discussions, as a result of additional reviews by Fall River's council, many of those changes were reversed. I think, again, it was getting back to the original concept that Amazon did not want to be going through permitting, taxing, approval, review from two communities. They were trying to streamline this. I think that was the pressure that was brought to bear on the city that resulted in this new and revised document. But the problem, of course, is that we have limitations on how much we could share our sovereign authority. And one of the things that the sovereign cannot share is the power to tax. That remains with the sovereign. We have the authority, as had been expressed in the prior agreement, to essentially designate or delegate inspection authority and building inspection approval permitting through the Fall River Building Department and building inspectors who become essentially deputized as Free Town inspectors. And in order, again, to streamline the process, the, those inspectors would be given the authority over this project. And that was now going to be characterized as the Boundary Project. So the agreement, as it stands now before you, much if not, you know, virtually all of the revisions that were brought in from the new council have been reversed to go back to what was, what was previously understood with an additional definition of the Boundary Projects and a recognition that, with respect to a Boundary Project, which is a project that straddles the border of both communities, that that would be subject to review of, of any building issues, inspectional issues, by the, the Fall River Building Inspectors acting as assistant building inspectors for the Town of Free Town. So there would be, there would be communication and cooperation between the two departments, but ultimately, it would be Fall River through their inspectors who would have authority over those projects. But as a result of making that very specific definition, we also added language that made clear that any inspections and any operations that wholly occur in either community out of, apart from the Boundary, that any building that was constructed wholly within Free Town or wholly within Fall River would be subject to the sole jurisdiction of those communities. So they would not be overlapping jurisdiction for those. The taxing authority was restored, recognizing that, unfortunately, it's just, absent a special act, that, that really wasn't going to happen. So we spent quite a bit of time discussing this on the phone, and you know, Jack and I spoke to it quite a bit about the significant concern that the town had that suddenly they were faced with all these revisions. And certainly, I don't believe there was any, I'm certain there was no bad faith intention at all on, on the path, on behalf of the Town of, City of Fall River with respect to the town. It was never intended, it was communicated to be very clearly, it was never intended to be an affront to the town. It was really, again, a new set of eyes looking at it from a different perspective. But I'm satisfied that the agreement that you have before you now, with minor changes, which I think are, you know, the due prerogative of a new executive in Fall River, do not change the substance of the agreement, do not change what we, what we represented to town meeting, last town meeting, as being a significant benefit to Free Town, much less Fall River. And I think that the agreement as it stands is in, in proper form to be re-executed and then sent forward to Fall River for review by, by the mayor and, I think, the city council as well for final approval on the city side. So certainly, I'm available to discuss further, but I'm satisfied that we've reached an appropriate conclusion to this latest round of revisions.
Question?
Yes.
The, the agreement, this IMA, doesn't only pertain to Amazon, correct?
No, it would, through, through Chairman, the, the agreement addresses anything on the Boundary within this, this particular district, this zoning district.
And the second question I have is, if a company came in and they were gonna build multiple buildings, of which no building straddled the line, but building that could be full building in Free Town, full building in Fall River, even though it's one company, that would still fall under the rules and regulations where Free Town would have to do the inspection if it was in Free Town? This only occurs when you have a building crossing the line?
Correct, correct. And that was, that was intended to make clear the jurisdictions of the two communities. And certainly, I mean, the agreement could always be amended should there be an interest or a concern that inspectional duties are beyond what, what the Town of Free Town wants to undertake. But the way it is intended now is to retain the jurisdiction of the respective communities.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion made and seconded to sign the IMA agreement between Free Town and Fall River. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
It's definitely done. Fall River already signed.
Already signed it?
Yes.
I had, Mr. Jack's gonna run that down to the finance committee, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. We've set up a meeting, the attorneys on the 22nd.
Yes.
You guys are still coming down?
Yes.
Okay, to discuss the issues that we have with Fall River.
I would like to, if through you, Mr. Chairman, broadly discuss those issues. Obviously, there are certain things we're gonna be discussing on the 22nd that we should wait for the 22nd, but if I, if I may, my understanding is that there's an issue that remains with the relationship between the City of Fall River and the Town of Free Town involving the water supply, an intermunicipal agreement for water supply. And that's been an ongoing concern. And what I, I, I think the town wants the city to recognize that the town was, you know, eager to see the intermunicipal agreement for the Amazon project move forward in the best interest of both communities with respect to community development. But at the same time, the town is very hopeful. I understand that there can be some, the beginning of some discussion to try to resolve this ongoing water issue. And what I've spoken to the town administrator previously about, and to Mr. Sadik, is the concept of, while, while there are other issues we'll be discussing on the 22nd, trying to reach out to the city and, and probably to the, to the mayor's office, to try to begin a dialogue, hopefully a productive dialogue, given the interests that both communities have in, in community development on the border and beyond the borders, to see if we can, if we could find an amicable mechanism to resolve the water supply issue. And I think there was a concern that we not link these two so closely together as to delay a possible economic development advantage for both communities, but at the same time, recognizing this effort at goodwill to encourage this discussion and see if we could use this, this mechanism moving forward to have a more appropriate discussion of the water issue. And my recommendation through- the water issue. And my recommendation through Mr. Chairman would be that, that the town, through the town administrator, make that outreach as soon as possible, even prior to our meeting on the 22nd, to try to open up that line of communication so that we could, we could, on a number of fronts, try to address what's been an issue for quite some time.
Open up that line of communication with the mayor.
With the mayor's office, yes. And that perhaps other entities in Fall River might assist us in this communication.
Can I first, I'm not sure if you think I'm from Fall River, I work for the town of Freetown.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'm the health agent.
I apologize.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah.
Certainly, I think from my perspective, the fact that we just agreed to sign the IMA shows us that, will show everybody that this board is willing to work with people. And we do consider them two separate issues. But water is an issue force, right, wrong or indifferent, it's an issue force. So we need to approach that. And I totally agree that we should have Jack reach out to the mayor ASAP and deal directly with his office.
If I may, to, to that point, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that this is, this is a serious issue. We've had this, we've had this issue ongoing for years, both on, from the health perspective and the cost perspective. And it, it is not appropriate for communities to, or inappropriate for communities that are linked by so many interests not to try to reach a resolution. And I think that this board just acted in good faith, notwithstanding some significant issues that were brought up in this, in this agreement. It's, we've, I know we were all taken aback when we, when we saw the agreement. And I do think there was, there was no, no intent, from my understanding from, from discussions with the folks in Fall River, there, there was no intent to, to offend the town. And yet, you know, again, that's what lawyers do. You wind up with, with a lawyer who provides input on a document. But I think, I think the town has shown a great deal of forbearance in, in allowing this process to go forward and now executing this agreement. But I think that in sending it back to Fall River, a message should be delivered indicating that you're acting in good faith with an expectation that the city will do the same and, and work with the town on a health, what is a health issue, but is also, you know, a significant fiscal issue. And, and I appreciate being the new health agent. And, and I think that that, that message should be brought forward so that, so that whatever route we, we go down, we'd at least try every avenue to address what's just a, a very unfortunate situation.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to have Jack approach the mayor?
No, we should have that reflected in the minutes.
I think a motion would be.
Yeah, I want that in the minutes. So I'll make a motion to have Jack reach out to the mayor of Fall River to stop the discussion on, on water and sewer prior to the meeting on the 22nd.
I'll second that.
The motion made and seconded, as, as, as said by Ms. Pacheco for town administrator to reach out to the mayor of Fall River and begin negotiations before our meeting on the 22nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Have at it, Mr. Healy.
Before your vacation.
Yes.
I'll be there on the 22nd.
Board of Health. Kevin, you're up. Adjust health fees as submitted by health agent Kevin Bernardo.
Bradley, let's cheers.
Excuse me.
He was a riot, huh?
Yeah.
Your next boss?
Yeah.
And mine too.
You know, I'm just going to remember that because I couldn't figure that stuff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, it's out, Board of Health.
This guy.
Mr. Sadek.
I'll let you make a comment on this. I have to present your case to the full board. I love that. Put you right on the spot.
Yeah.
According to our fee schedule, I wanted to make two changes. I wanted to delete the massage permit, since we don't do any of the inspections. That's strictly for the state now. And I wanted to add the permit for food, residential kitchen. That would be $150.
Can you explain what residential kitchen means?
Thank you.
Yeah. A residential kitchen is the same thing almost as a regular, falls under the guidelines of the food code for a commercial kitchen, but it, it limits individuals to processed potentially hazardous foods. It wants them to remain small scale, but they still be able to have a little bake shop at home, maybe do some canned stuff. So if you want to have a little business in your house, you could do that, but they, they want you to remain smaller and you could still exercise. Yeah, it's, it's, you can, you can run a kitchen out of your house, pretty much.
You can?
Yeah.
We're not zoned for that. You can't run a business out of your house unless you're zoned for it, as I understand.
But again, it would be, it's small scale.
So what you're saying is that if I want to bake bread and I want to sell a couple of loaves of bread, it's like having chickens in your backyard. You can sell chickens, you can sell eggs. And I could sell, I could sell.
As long as you're permitted, you've done, you've done some training, the surf safe, allergen awareness, and you paid your permit, and you have liability insurance, you could do a small scale business out of your home. Again, it's to remain small. When I talk to someone in the state, they don't want large scale operations. That's why you can't do any potentially hazardous foods, can't be doing catering out of your house. It's got to be, for example, there's one in Dayton that was doing, it's called Kev's Country Cookies. It's pretty much frozen cookies. And he puts like a, he bakes and puts a stick, makes like bouquets out of them, very small scale. And it's in the, it's in the regulation.
Who, who's going to make the decision for this? What we consider small scale?
It depends normally on your, on your, on your menu. So if you're saying, oh, I'm going to make, I'm, I'm going to do a catering operation, it's strictly no. If we're doing a.
You want to sell bread or cookies or something like that?
Yeah, whatever it is, you're allowed to do that.
You want to can things and sell canned stuff like a farm stand or something like that?
I can actually give you the.
No, I don't need it, as long as you know what we're doing.
Can you weigh in on this?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what we're seeing here is the intersection between different regulatory schemes in the town. So certainly, from the perspective of, of the health agent, there are, there are allowances on the health side, but it would still have to meet with, with the zoning requirements. So if there is, if there are zoning, if, if the zoning allows for a home occupation, that will be acceptable. But ultimately, zoning determinations are made by the zoning enforcement off of the officer of the building commissioner. And so that there, there is that intersection. But the mere fact that the board of health and the health director or health agent would allow certain things under the health code and the sanitary code doesn't necessarily mean that it's allowable under zoning. So we need, so we need to be careful that notwithstanding what the state says, it still has to be compliant with the state.
Exactly. So I'm, I'm sorry to mention that. But the, other communities have the same thing. And it's actually in the food code. You can have a, besides a food, regular food establishment, you can have a residential kitchen if you're needing the other requirements.
So it's not changing, it's not changing anything specific for the town so much as just making, making you aware of what's allowed under that code, but it still has to meet other requirements. It doesn't, it doesn't.
The only reason I brought this up is because it's not in place. So if somebody said, I want to open up a residential kitchen, it's in the code that you can. We have no fee for it. There's no, we have no way to permit somebody to do it. So I wanted to delete the.
This, this doesn't necessarily affect the guy that wants to sell, or make cucumbers, tomatoes and stuff like that.
No, that would be just a regular, well, farmer's market. For anybody else that, again, we don't go police, policing every single person that, so if we see a farmer's market, they're supposed to get a permit.
So in essence, what you're saying, if you're going to make something in your house and you want to sell it, we want to know about it.
Definitely.
And we want to make sure you're doing it correctly. We're not saying you can't do it. And the fee for that is $150 for us to take the, so the first $50 dozen cookies you make, go to pay your fee.
That's what I'm saying. So when Lisa makes, when Lisa makes cupcakes for the board, she's going to have to get a permit to do it?
No.
It's only $150.
Yeah. No.
This is fine, like business.
If I, and that's what I'm saying, like, it's going to be far, those people are going to be far and few between because we're really zoned so well that there's not going to.
Yeah, there's only a few cases where the conversation even comes up. But when the conversation came up, and again, nobody was ready to act. The conversation came to us and we weren't prepared for it. We weren't, we weren't prepared to handle, at, at that time I said, I, we don't have that in place, but it's, it's.
Somebody actually wanted to.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, how about this? How about if somebody wants to cook in their kitchen and sell in their food truck?
That's when I wanted to. That's how I, that's how it came up.
Okay.
Because technically.
Wow, I am good.
You're very, you're very smart. See, what happens is.
No, this is a new one.
Oh.
But that would come up too.
That had to come up.
Right, so.
When it comes to food trucks, you're only supposed to be limited to certain things you can do also. Because food code says, in a normal kitchen, commercial kitchen, to reduce food to a certain temperature, you need certain equipment. In a food truck, it's hard to do that. So if you had a big pot of soup, how are you going to get it to that certain temperature? So we limit these individuals to do things. And the question came up, well, can I do it at home? Absolutely not, because I've never seen inside your home. So that's how it came up.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. No, because now, no, because now it clicks. Now I, I can, you know what I mean? I, I don't get having somebody in the middle of conference lanes selling baked bread out of their house. I don't, but I understand, like, taking, cooking it there and then moving it and selling it somewhere else.
And the state also says, I'll just share with the whole thing, the state also says, when it comes to nonprofit organizations or, or potluck dinners, we don't inspect. So if you're having a church gathering and everybody makes a plate at home, we don't, we don't, we even look, because it's impossible for everybody to, to inspect. Everybody's off their use. Yeah. The thing is, we, they, it's suggested that you tell everybody what the ingredients are. But once you make a profit and you start selling the stuff, that's when we look into your home.
So we're really on solid.
But we check where this is coming from.
Lisa's really on solid ground when she makes the cupcakes for the board.
Of course. Like she washes her hands.
I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the.
Residential kitchen at $150 and to delete the massage.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm sorry about the confusion.
No, it was confusing, that's all.
Yeah, in the beginning, yeah.
Anybody that bakes bread is going to have your picture up there with darts in it.
We look, we got a picture of you.
All right.
All right. The man gets over to the chairman of the personnel.
Oh, Kevin, before you run.
Kevin, before you go.
That's our.
Yes, pleasure to meet you. Sorry about the confusion, Kevin. No, no problem, no problem.
Other discussion.
Wait a minute, Kevin.
Kevin, have we set a meeting date for that other cleanup discussion?
To meet up with the. I would say, you want to report on it?
No, no, no. An email would be great. But I just want to make sure that the young lady is kept informed. Okay. But there's no formal meeting yet, right?
We haven't decided because Monday's been, Mondays have been kind of busy.
We've been full on meetings. Right. The next couple of Mondays are full and most of the days that she's.
I can send out another email, maybe.
Just let her know that you, that you guys went by yesterday. Have you talked to her?
Today, I went by today. I had other follow-up, but it's going to be mailed out or hand-delivered tomorrow.
And the other guy's got, the back of the state's going to do it, huh?
He's going, he says that his enforcement action takes a little longer, but what they're going to do first is break, get those drums out of there first.
Yeah.
And then stop the enforcement.
Okay.
You know, it should be duly noted that today at about 1:00, we saw our board of health person crawling out of, looked like a dump soaking wet. He looked like a wet rat. Rain coming down, coming out.
That was pretty good.
He said, that looks like a homeless person. He said, no, that's our board of health chairman.
Yeah, it's raining pretty good, it was soaked.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. He's, he's soaking wet. Soaking wet. Personnel, who want to?
All right. Do you have a motion to sign a recruit training fee agreement with the drillman long, as submitted by Carlton, chief habit?
I'll make the motion second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have three change of status forms, from probationary qualified firefighter to qualified firefighter. Mallory Bones at $15 an hour, Kyle Olson at 14, and Jonathan Simmons at 14.
Second.
All those in favor? Robert Raymond's letter.
Here, right here.
There it is.
Thanks. We have a letter of resignation from Robert Raymond, effective June 4th, 2015. Due to my upcoming move out of Freetown, I hereby resign my position as an elected member of the Freetown Planning Board, effective this date. I am grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the people of Freetown and to have shared my responsibilities with many good and respectful individuals whose integrity and kindness I fully appreciate. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion made to accept Mr. Raymond's resignation.
Go second.
Yes, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I just say, this man has been in town for many, many years, been on the planning board for eons, and he is a wealth of knowledge. And he will be missed by, by his board, I'm sure. But I just want to wish him well. He's done really a lot, a lot of work, a lot of background work, so. And we also have a, a letter of resignation from Mike McHugh, effective June 10th, 2015. Is my understanding that the soil board meeting has been scheduled for July 13th, a date that at this time I already know I'm unable to attend? It seems apparent after recent scheduling issues that my schedule and that of the board numbers is not compatible. So I feel it appropriate at this time to resign as soil board clerk to afford the board the opportunity to seek more suitable help. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept Mr. McHugh's letter of resignation. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
I, I took the liberty today to talk to some of the chairman of the soil board, to talk to Nadine Diamond, who is a floater in town. I know you work for 28 hours a, a week in the war on the bomb and you're, you're a floater. We need some help in the, on the soil board. It's going to take you maybe, maybe two hours a month at the most.
That's exactly right.
At the most, at the most. And I asked her if you're willing to do that. I know she has a childcare issue, from a financial standpoint. It's not worth to come back to one of our meetings. I told her that when we have soil board meetings, which usually maybe two a year, for 15 minutes within the board of selectmen's meeting, I'll just tape it and give her that for the meeting, for the minutes. And she had, she had no issues. But I also know that we have money set aside, so if, for example, she was straight out with her 36 hours a week, you know, covering other things in the town hall, if she had to stay for two hours, you know, to do the soil board stuff, you know, we just charge it off to the, the soil board. So she was, she said she didn't have any issue, she would do it. So that would take care of that. I also thought that once we get the, I think we only have 11 permits anyway, I will set it up on a computer, we will program for her and automate it.
And actually, we're going down to one, one meeting a year.
Yeah, we're going to go down.
So we're not even going to have the two, so that's even better.
Yeah, so that'll take care of that.
So Lee, do you want to make a motion to approve Nadine Diamond as, or appoint Nadine as the soil board clerk?
For me, I have a motion.
You want to make that motion?
I'd like to make that motion to approve Nadine.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Senator change of status form for Jessica Thomas. She is the temporary treasurer and as per union agreement, when her job skills or job changes, she is due the dollar an hour extra. That's called the alley move.
That's the alley move.
That's the alley move.
Second.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to appoint Jack Healy as the community aggregation delegate. Do I have a motion to approve Jack Healy as a community aggregation delegate?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, what that is.
What is the community?
The community aggregation delegate.
I thought you said aggravator.
I was saying, does that work?
Oh, no, that works.
The, I've been working with Serpent on the aggregation project. Right now, they're working through the state agencies.
And all get cheaper electricity?
Yes, that's the hit.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Moving on to new business, dates for the upcoming Board of Selectmen's meetings. June 24th, July 13th, July 27th, August 10th, and August 24th.
Oh, God, that's all summer.
It is.
I don't want to like. We're going to be off now.
I have a second, 24th is picking a regular.
We shouldn't have any meetings.
Wait. Oh, come on, you know we can't, we'll never get through a month without having a meeting.
I know, on June 24th. What's the meeting on June 24th? That's to move the bridge. That's just to move the bridge. All right.
What else is happening on 24th? She's actually going on vacation.
We have to have the bridge in.
That's it?
We're missing one thing. We're missing.
We're missing two things.
We can change it, cancel it.
Yeah, if we have nothing on July 13th, I would say, like, why?
These sound good to me, and if we need to cancel, we can. We'll be the day.
Okay.
And that's it for new business. Under rule business, key fobs, status of force off Main Street.
We're never going to get anywhere. Richmond Road, we should leave on there.
We've got, that's coming.
Key fobs are good.
Key fobs, we are good.
Richmond Road will come off tonight. Well, actually, it'll come off on the 22nd.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, not that tonight, so that's good.
No.
Level of all points.
I didn't want to add that, but.
Because it's low.
Well, that very conservative measuring device that was put in by one of the Board of Selectmen was moved by two feet of ice and bent over, so.
It's still pretty accurate.
High-level device, it's still accurate, although it looks kind of tired.
Oh, by the way, I ran into the lady that takes care of the bolt ramp on Saturdays and the gentleman that takes care of the bolt ramp on Sundays, and they love their job.
They do.
They do.
Happy as clean.
It's a good, they both said it's a great job.
As long as you have some damn motion, you're awesome.
That's it. Great job. So we're missing the, this stuff has to be signed, but we're missing.
Two, the OPEB and.
The OPEB statement, and who is that? Just somebody's change of status.
Yeah, I just want to say something first to the Board of Health. Actually, a friend of mine sent me a picture yesterday, they were on a walk in town, found hypodermic needles on the ground. So I just want people to know that there is a special way you're supposed to dispose of hypodermic needles. If you have to, you can put them in an old laundry container and take them to the fire station, or you can contact the Board of Health, but in no circumstance should a child or anybody pick them up. So just be really, really careful. This is the kind of stuff that's.
Where was that, do you know?
Yeah, it was in a sonnet on the main room.
And if people are having real difficulties, and they have so many diabetic, we can assist them. Also, Gary and I have, we have a shops program, and he disposes of them, and we purchase them. So we can help individuals out.
So we don't adjourn, right?
No.
Do you suggest it?
Is anything changing in the budget?
The only thing that's changing on the budget is transportation.
We are changing it?
Yeah, I mean, it's a new figure, this is a pretty solid figure. So we just put a hole. Say, it was, they wanted to.
They want the two towns to make the change that Nitzie reflected in calculations. It's a reduction in transportation. Doesn't affect the rest of the budget.
So, Lou, we're going to reset, I guess.
Okay. Question to last, Tom, maybe?[1790.13]